Okay. It is ten o'clock. I'm gonna call this Board of Equalization. Special Order for Wednesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. First order of business is the roll call. Mr. Brett Towns.
Present.
Vice Chair Eleanor Thompson.
Present.
And I'm Patrick Crowley, the chairman. We're gonna do all these. We've got five properties. They're gonna be done by phone. Notice of the meeting was properly posted. So let's get Mr. Sam Wan on the phone and...
Yeah, that's all the LOE stuff.
See what it says.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system. Sam Wan is not available.
Now, Sam, we'll give you another opportunity. I don't know how to operate this silly thing.
Do we just have the one number for him?
Uh, I believe he's got two numbers on his email, so I'm gonna pull up and we'll try the other one.
Okay.
Uh, this is the one that he listed on the form, so. And he was sent the notices.
Yeah, man. According to the voicemail, it was Sam Wan.
Yeah.
Must be an office phone number.
Can you hear the calling, Brian? It's a major call.
Ah, yes. Can we speak to Sam Wan?
Yes, in one moment.
Thank you.
Let's try her again and I'll tell her who we are.
We are sorry. There is no one available to take.
I was so excited for my first time.
I hope he don't do this every time, because he's gonna be with us for a long time.
Thank you for calling Ryan and having a director call.
Yeah, this is Patrick Crowley, the chairman of the Board of Equalization in Oklahoma County, and calling for Sam Wan.
Okay, cool, please. We're calling Texas.
It's Dallas.
Hi, can you confirm the last name of the person?
Uh, I think it's W O N.
Look at the A N.
Okay.
Oh, it's W A N, okay.
We are sorry. There is no one available to take your call.
All right, let's call that number where it says it's Sam Wan. I'll leave it in the message.
I say, I did receive a call from someone else at Ryan LLC about these. She's not supposed to be the one appearing, but we could try her if we want, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna say, try this. I'm gonna go run and find that other number if I still have it.
Oh, yeah. Hello?
Sam Wan?
Yes.
Ah, all right. This is Patrick Crowley, chairman of the Board of Equalization in Oklahoma County. Uh, you have five properties on our agenda this morning. Are you...
Yeah.
Are you ready?
A different number for the hearings, because I couldn't make it today, because I'm busy with a lot of moving today. Um, I gave my email to, oh, sorry, not my email, the phone number to Gary.
Yeah, we've...
Did I get it?
We called, we called this number and we called another number where Gal answers the phone, and we asked for you and we couldn't get you. Nobody told us that you weren't going to be able to be here. We'll have to, we'll, by statute, we'll reset it one time.
Is he saying he's not ready? Is he saying he's not ready? Or he needs a different phone number?
Yeah.
No, I, yeah, I, yeah, there's supposed to be a different person during the hearings.
Um, who, who is it that's supposed to be doing it?
It should be, um, Nick Kesling. Um, I gave my, his number to Gary. He said, he like confirmed it to you as well.
All right, Nick, what, how you spell last name?
Kesling, K E S L I N G.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no idea.
And what is, uh, Nick's phone number?
Uh, one second.
Was it, was it Nick somebody?
Nick, so I received a notice from Sam Wan that Nick was going to be filling in on the next round of appeals, but we did receive a call from him just now downstairs that he is gonna be doing these two.
Oh, good.
I was over there.
We do have his number, yes.
We have his number on the phone.
Yeah, number.
Two, one, four, seven, two, six, six, five, eight, eight?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. Great, and will Nick, will Nick also be doing the next round as well?
Yes, he should be, yes.
Great, all right, thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Thank you, Gary.
Can I pose a question quick?
Sure.
Okay, um, so we have letters of authorization for people to appeal when they're not the owner or whatever, and I believe they're just in Sam's name, so can somebody else do the hearings?
Well, I've checked the statutes for that, which I can. Uh, like I said, I received written confirmation from Sam Wan that during the next round, the one that's in a few weeks, Nick was gonna be filling in. Did not receive that for this. Now, we do have verbal, I assume that was he finally picked up?
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, I can check the statutes for sure, but I think that should suffice.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because...
Let me, yeah, let me write down to check the statutes for sure, but that, that should suffice.
Do we have a copy of the form that you're supposed to send? Or a box of sign?
Um...
Because there is a requirement that be...
Is it for Ryan or is it...
The affidavit.
An affidavit.
So he will be, I'll be mailing him the affidavit anyway.
Okay.
What's that? Okay.
Actually, does it even have Sam's name on it?
Okay, I think it just might state Ryan LLC, so if it does, I think we're okay.
So he's a member of Ryan LLC, he should be.
Yeah, I think we're okay. Yes, I just wanted to make sure, because otherwise...
But we don't have an affidavit from it.
Yeah.
Which I believe was filed.
Yes, yes, so I, yeah, so the affidavits I get from y'all during the meeting, anyone who appears by phone, I get that from them afterward by email. So I still will reach out to him for the affidavit, but...
Gotcha, okay.
As long as they have authorized him to do that, which Ryan LLC through Sam Wan looks like has just done for today's property, then we should be good. So I'll go ahead and give him a call.
Yeah, the problem is that they can't latch on to somebody else's affidavit.
It's gonna be difficult to say that's for sure.
No, yeah, we'll make sure we get his actual name.
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Nick Kesling?
Yes, sir.
This is Patrick Crowley, chairman of the Board of Equalization in Oklahoma County. We have a full board here today. Uh, and five properties on the agenda that I will advise you that we don't have an affidavit from you, so that, uh, Gary will send you an affidavit that you'll need to fill out and sign, uh, so that we can make that part of the record, okay?
Okay, sure.
Uh, it'll be after we get done here. Uh, are you ready on these properties?
Uh, yes, sir, I am.
All right, the first one we have, uh, on our agenda is BOE, uh, number sixty-nine. It's property at nine sixteen Northwest One Hundred and Ninth Street. Uh, the assessor has assessed this property at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand and twenty-five dollars, and I believe that you're asking for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand each. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. All right, tell us what you want us to know about your property here.
In one moment.
You know, for the record, maybe to help you find it, uh, we're on account number ending in zero, zero, one, two.
Zero, zero, one, two, okay. Um, after that, um, let's see, on a little list.
Okay, you want me to give you the whole number, maybe that's... The whole account number is one, three, zero, seven, six, zero, zero, one, two.
Zero, one, two.
The property is nine, eight, or, I'm sorry, nine sixteen Northwest One Hundred and Ninth Street in Oklahoma City.
Okay, um...
I got the map pulled up, it's made.
Did you find it?
Um, yeah, no, I, I saw it down yet, but, um, uh, I believe these were, um, I believe all the appeals today. Oh, there it is. Yeah, nine sixteen Northwest, or Ninth Street, okay, forgot that. Um, so from what I understand, um, there is, this property has a, uh, a capped value or taxable value of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand and twenty-five dollars.
All right, let me stop, let me stop you right there. We don't have jurisdiction over whatever the taxable value is. The only thing this board determines is the fair market value, what a willing buyer would pay a willing seller, or seller would ask, uh, for the property.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you for that clarification. I, um, yeah, so, yeah, we're not talking about any sort of, um, yeah, taxable values here. This is all market value.
Yes.
Yes, thank you for that. Um, so, uh, really, um, we, we appealed this property just based on, um, a, a twenty-twenty-one acquisition of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, uh, which we believe, um, is a, remains to be a fair value for this property. Um, and, and that's, that's really all we, we've got on this one.
Okay. Uh, and I show the, the date this was purchased for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand is March fifteenth of twenty-one, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you're, you understand last year it was a hundred and thirty thousand five hundred, and you're asking for less than what it was last year. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I, I guess so.
Well, you see where the, uh, problem lies. All right, and, uh, was this a arms-length transaction?
Uh, to my knowledge, it was. Um, we, uh...
Was it a purchase with any other properties or was it just this one?
It was just this one. Um, there are times when, um, when our clients, when they do have a multi parcel or bulk purchases, um, this was not the cases.
Okay. All right, and so your, your argument is strictly limited to the purchase price in twenty-one, March of twenty-one, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else right now? You're good opportunity to respond to the assessor, uh, but we'll hear from the assessor second if you're done with the first part of yours.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yep, that's, that's it for me.
Okay, we got a question here from Mr. Towns.
Yes, I was just curious, if this was a rental and what the rental rate is, and the monthly rental rate.
Uh, these are, uh, killer, uh, this is a rental property. Um, I, I don't have the, the rental rate, um, right now.
Okay.
They're there.
Yeah, I believe that you're gonna be on the docket for the next batch, which is probably gonna be sometime next week. Uh, it's, it, you can do whatever you wanna do, you know, present whatever evidence you want to us, but it's, it's helpful if we know what the rent is, okay?
Yes, sir, I, I understand that.
All right, now, I understand you probably don't, you may not have that on the properties today, but in future, that's, that'd be a good thing to do, okay?
Okay, understood.
All right. Uh, we'll hear from the assessor.
Okay, um, like you said, nine sixteen Northwest One Hundred and Ninth Street. Um, it's close to the intersection of Western and Hefner. Um, we ran our comparables according to what they sent us, which was a printout of the assessor's site, the public one. Um, so most of our comparables, you can see the addresses match up to that page. Um, and the sales support our value of what we have it set at. Um, we too asked for rent when we emailed Sam and he did not give it to us. Um, so I would just like to make a point of that, that we have asked for it and we did not receive it, um, in our email. Their main, um, defense of what they wanted was that it was purchased within a two-year cycle, um, and that's why the price should stay the same, which I don't know if that's something that Texas does and maybe that's something that they have, but that's not something we do, so, um, but yeah, our comparable support what we have it on for.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
All right. Uh, anything else you wanna, um, tell us, Mr. Kesling?
Uh, no, sir, I've got nothing further to add.
Okay. On that event, I will, uh, close the hearing on BOE number sixty-nine, at nine sixteen Northwest One Hundred and Ninth Street, and open up the hearing on BOE seventy, uh, which is a property at twelve twenty-five Kathy Lane in Midwest City. Have you, are you prepared on that property?
Yes, I've got that one here as well, yes.
Okay. Tell us what you want, oh, just for the record, do you, this is account number ending in one, three, nine, zero. Does that match yours, Mr. Kesling?
Uh, one, three, yes, sir.
Okay.
At twelve twenty-five Kathy Lane, um...
Tell us what you want us to know about this property.
All right, the... Oh, this seems to be another, um, another appeal we made based on a, based on the two-year cycle, um, that we, I guess mistakenly, we just misinterpreted, um, uh, just how Oklahoma operates with that. Um, but, um, yes, we appealed based on, uh, an eighty-nine thousand dollar, um, acquisition price.
And when was that?
This was, I have it marked as occurring in March one, however, it might have been April of twenty-twenty-one. Sometimes our, our days are...
Okay. I understand. All right, uh, so your, your whole argument is that, you know, you purchased it for eighty-nine thousand in March of twenty-one or April sometime in twenty-one, and you want it to be the same, right?
Um, yes, uh, if, if it were, um, we, we do have an adjusted number as well. Uh, we, we, um, we apply a, uh, a time adjustment to that acquisition price, and so on our end, that moved it up to ninety-seven to ninety-eight for our estimate. Um... But...
So your, your adjusted value is tied, uh, to, from eighteen, uh, twenty-one to now is ninety-seven thousand two ninety-eight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you understand the assessor has assessed it at real close to that, but it's less, ninety-seven thousand one twenty-five?
Yeah, I, I, I'm seeing that here. Yeah, this, um, yeah, so this, this appeal and likely all the others, um, uh, but really, the case for this one, um, this, this should have been withdrawn, um, because, yeah, that adjusted acquisition price, not only that, that is coming up over...
No, you're talking, no, no, you're, you're on the wrong figure. You're talking about taxable. The fair market, um, look at your paper again. The, the assessor's value is a hundred and six five for fair market. That number that you're talking about is close to yours is the taxable, and that's not the, the number we're dealing with. Look at that number.
Right, yeah, see, that's, that's what I thought, on the last account, um, okay.
Well, I, okay, I'm, I'm lost here. What, how do we get, where did you find ninety-six down? I've got ninety-seven thousand one twenty-five on the formal appeal.
I think I made a wrong value on his formal appeal.
Yeah, that, that was our mistake. We, uh, we marked the, um, the assessor, the, the capped value as such the fair market value that these discussions pertain to.
Yeah, we don't have anything to do with anything other than the fair market value as of January first of this year.
Mr. Kesling, did you, did you say a second ago that you were considering withdrawing this one?
Um, yes, yeah, I did say that.
Is, is that what you wanna do?
Yeah, maybe I'll withdraw this one.
Okay. Uh, get some withdrawn, maybe we have anything to do with it then.
So because it came, because it came for the board, we will have to make that decision. So you can set it today if you want, or you can...
We'll set it Thursday.
Okay.
Do what?
We'll set it Thursday, because it came here, it can't just go away.
Okay, yeah.
So we'll just, okay, we, we go on the seventh.
All right, let's go to the next one on the docket, which is BOE number seventy-one. I show that property at twenty-five oh four Northwest One Hundred and Fifty-Ninth Street. Uh, the, the account number is ending in one, three, zero, zero. You got that one, Mr. Kesling?
Okay, let me see here. One, three, zero.
How far America Memorial? Uh, so, oh.
And the, the, uh, the property address is twenty-five oh four Northwest One Hundred and Fifty-Ninth Street.
Yes, in Edmond, okay. Yeah, well, all right, we're all on that one, and it looks like the assessor has assessed the value of this one at two hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred, unless written the wrong amount again, and...
I, I think that's what happened. We don't have the fair market value, um, on there.
All right, well, let me do, real quick, you assess the assessor, is that the value?
Yes, market value, we have it at two seventy-three five.
Okay. They have the market value of two hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred. Has absolutely, the market value has absolutely nothing to do with the taxable value or any of these, these other exotic things we might wanna try and apply to it. Uh, just, and we're really straightforward. What, what's the fair market value? So we got two hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred where the assessor's at, and according to your appeal, uh, form, you're asking for two hundred and sixty-five thousand, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's, that's what's, uh, yeah, that, that's what was included with what we submitted. Um, however, seeing that this was, uh, based on another twenty-twenty-one, uh, acquisition, um, and, um, yeah, so that was, that was two years ago, and that was just below what the fair market value currently sits at. Um, and for that reason, um, we're gonna be withdrawing this one as well.
Okay. Mr. Kesling, one, one thing that we consider, we've, is, um, I mean, we've had a lot of appreciation in this state. You know, in two thousand twenty-two, we had, our Oklahoma County, the average appreciation of property, residential property was thirteen point eight percent, sixteen point five percent in two thousand twenty-three. So I think you're seeing some of the things that we are, that asking to hold at a certain level, uh, I think you're catching on to, to maybe some of the, the error of the, of the thinking. But anyway, that's, I just wanna let you know, two years, we've appreciated property on the average thirty percent in this county.
Yes, sir, and that's, that's what we're, um, that's what we're seeing all across the country right now. And, so, I mean, um, if, yeah, if, if this market was, um, uh, a more steadily increasing and wasn't, you know, the rapidly appreciating market it is right now, then, yeah, maybe these, uh, maybe these appeals would hold some sort of water, but these are all so closed, it, it just, it's not realistic to ask for, you know, a lower value.
Okay.
Such limits are closed. Yeah, so I, I, thank you.
Well, as the chairman said, they're on the docket, so we have to dispose of them one way or the other. We, they just can't go away, so we'll keep going.
Yeah, we'll, uh, so that you know, the letter go out, uh, Thursday, I believe, tomorrow's decision day. Uh, we'll meet, the board will meet, everyone decide on these properties. Uh, if you're withdrawing them, uh, the, we'll, we'll make that notation as we move along, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, so you're withdrawing, uh, BOE number seventy-four also, all right?
Seventy-one, 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 seventy-one. We haven't gotten to seventy-four yet.
Yeah, you, well, you withdrew number seventy-four, okay. All right, let's go to the BOE number seventy-four. All right, let's go to the BOE number seventy-four, uh, which is going to be the property at fourteen six three two Pony Road in Oklahoma City. And it's a account number ending in one four one zero. Uh, have you got that property, Mr. Kestrel, in front of you?
Yes, sir, I've got that, hold up.
Okay, uh, show the assessor has assessed that value at three hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and you're asking, I believe, for three hundred and twelve thousand even, right?
Wait, no, we're at three hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Um, yes.
Three hundred and sixty, three hundred and sixty-three thousand is the assessor's value.
It's what?
Three hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Okay, so the form is wrong, okay?
He did the taxable thing in hand.
Three hundred and sixty-three thousand even?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Did you hear that, Mr. Kestrel?
Uh, yes, sir, I did.
Okay, so we're at three hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Three sixty-three, sir.
Sixty-three, yes.
Three hundred and sixty-three thousand, sure.
And he's at three twelve.
And you're at three twelve, right?
Um, yes, sir. Um, now, this was uh, once again, based on um based on a twenty twenty-one purchase. Um, however, uh, so our our, the the raw sale price for what it's sold for in, I believe, October of twenty twenty-one um, was three twelve, um, and when adjusted for uh, when we made our time adjustments here, it is coming up with three thirty-one, three ninety-four on our end. Um, now, our time adjustments uh tend to be on the lower end, um especially considering the average appreciation rate rate that um, you know, Oklahoma County has undergone recent years, um, but uh, just based on this acquisition that occurred close to the end of twenty twenty-one, it was for three twelve, um it just uh it 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 might not be, I guess, in in, our opinion is that it might not be quite valued um in terms of market value at three sixty-three, but that is all we have on this one.
Okay, uh, let me see if I understand you right, are you, you alleging or saying that instead of three twelve, you're asking for three what on your adjusted value?
Our our adjusted acquisition price is um coming up at three thirty-one, three ninety-four.
Okay. Is is that what you're now asking the board to say to them?
Um, yes, if if there's a way that I can um amend our stated opinion of value, um then that that might be more more in the realm of reality.
Okay.
And out of curiosity, is this also a rental?
Yes, this is also a rental, that's correct.
All right, but you have no rent information?
Uh, unfortunately not.
Okay.
Um, hoping hoping by uh, by the time I read again next week on these, that uh we'll have something, but um, that that could be, um, you know, our our clients are um uh, real estate investment trusts and um yeah, that being the case, these are rental properties and um for some reason, they're um they're not very forthcoming with their current rent rates. Um, also, and this other other info, but that that can be hard to get, so that's why uh Sam and myself might uh, might have trouble getting that to you.
Right, well, rent skyrocketed uh in the last couple of years, so. Um, but, and they may, that may be why your clients are reluctant to provide you with what your current rent rate is, but at any rate, that's that's your position on this particular beach property at this point. Uh, and we'll hear from the assessor, if you got any, do you know why I'm doing anything else right now?
Sure.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
Okay, yep, one four six three two Pony Road. Um, that is going to be near Hundred Fiftieth and Frontage Road there. Um.
Our right thirty-third?
Yes.
I know, um, is it?
Hefner Parkway, which Portland Avenue.
Yeah, Hefner Speedway.
Oh, yeah, Highway seventy-four. Um, so we pulled up our comparables, uh, which, you know, they sent us um their comparables, which is another printout of our assessor website that's available to the public. Um, and uh the comparables that we used with quite minimal adjustments have supported the value increase of this property to the three sixty-three, I mean, we, our first one sold for three seventy, the second one for three sixty-one, they're all in that realm, which is what we do, we mass appraise. So using those comps, it supports that value of three sixty-three, so that's what we would like to set it at.
Did you hear that, Mr. Kestrel?
Yes, sir, lots better, um oh, I've I've got a, I've I've got nothing further to add to that.
Okay, all right, well, then I will close the hearing on BOE number seventy-four, the Pony Road property and move to BOE number seventy-five. And let's see, that's going to be account number ending in one five eight zero. Have you got that property in front of you? It's the property of one five eight two five Carriage House Road in Edmond.
Uh, yes, sir, I've got it.
Okay. All right, now, first thing I gotta do is see if I've got the right figures on, um, cause I'm going from your appeal form.
Right, it's it's proven to not be very uh, very reliable.
Yeah, so, and and, you know, I'm not sure jurisdictionally, you know, what, you know, when we have these things, but uh, I show the assessor has assessed this property at two hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred, that's not right.
Two forty-three five.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so, uh apparently, Ms. Thompson has a newer version of this or something. Uh, all right, and I show you're asking for two hundred and seven thousand five hundred, am I right about that?
Um, can you look here? Yep, so that was a November twenty twenty-one sale, um
We got one that's thirty percent sixty.
Um, yes, we have um two four three five hundred even, um.
You valued it at two forty-three five hundred, you said?
No, 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 I was I was uh our our, so it it stayed, uh, our uh, in our packet that we sent over, that um we uh, we arrived at a value that stood up to two oh seven five hundred. Um, however, I'd like to once again amend that with um some time adjustment, uh, take it into consideration, um and what we have is is closer to um, to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars even, um and when when adjusted for time.
Okay.
Ten percent.
All right, so now you're asking for two hundred and twenty thousand even?
Sure.
All right, and the accessory value of two forty-three five hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
Twenty-seven.
All right, anything else you wanna tell us right now about this property?
Uh, no, so that's gonna be all.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor on the Carriage House Road property.
Okay, uh, closest intersection is gonna be around one hundred and sixty-fourth and Rockwell. Uh, and um we ran our comparables, which what we were provided was a print off of the assessor's website, available to the public. Um, again, we mass appraise, we don't just time adjust the one house up, we compare it to sales that have gone on, sales that we have found support um the value and that they're even a little bit under what the median is, so um, we've stayed at our price that we have set.
Okay, you hear the assessor?
I did, yes.
Okay. Uh, is that all from the assessor?
Yes, unless you have any questions.
Is is this at Deer Creek or Parkland City?
That's Deer Creek.
That's Deer Creek.
Yes, it is Deer Creek.
Northwest of the west end of Galardea. Edmond has the east end of Galardea.
Okay.
Deer Creek has the west end.
And here's a map for, here's Galardea and here's the property right here.
Yeah, guys, get your creeps on here.
Oh, okay.
Um, but I have a, I have nothing further to uh to add to the assessor's comment.
Okay, well, then, uh, the assessor done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're gonna, I'm gonna close the hearing on BOE number seventy-five, and that's the last one on the docket today. Uh, and I believe we're gonna have, uh, Mr. Kestrel, we'll have you next week on a number of properties?
Uh, I believe so, um.
Oh, and I, one thing I need to ask you, but sure, I'm sure this is right, but the this Carriage House Road property is real?
Uh, it is, yes.
Yeah, but you don't have any rent information?
Unfortunately, again, uh.
All right, well, yeah, we have the only got what you got.
Yeah, sure.
All right, well, we'll uh, uh, we'll close the hearing then on BOE number seventy-five. Last one on our docket, we appreciate you. I know you're, Mr. Kestrel, uh, that apparently sprung this on you with little information.
A little bit, yeah, just doing what I can to you, yeah.
Well, you, you didn't answer what you, what you got.
All of them.
All right, well, we'll uh, we'll, we're gonna decide what uh, we think the market value of this property and everything else that's been brought the board this week. Uh, which is not necessarily your property. Uh, and let her go out tomorrow, I believe, and uh you should get it go Friday, Saturday, or however your mail goes, and maybe Monday, okay?
Okay, well, that sounds great, well, thank you all for your time and your patience, I appreciate you.
I appreciate your uh position too, Mr. Kestrel, thank you for uh all the information that you did have, okay?
Yes, sir, no, no problem.
And yes, and
Good one.
Tell me you're gonna send that to her.
Yes, and uh, Mr. Kestrel, real quick, before we hang up, what's a good email to reach you at?
Uh, so my email is gonna be um, my first name, which is just Nick, N I D K. And then a a dot or a period. Kestrel, K E S S M L I N G. At Ryan dot com.
Perfect, all right, so I will go ahead, I will send you that affidavit and then uh, we will also be, I believe we've got you on the agenda for next week, uh, April twenty-fifth, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Perfect, all righty, and to remind you of our policy on withdrawals, um, if you'd like to withdraw any of those, and you can get those to us in a timely manner, you won't have to, you know, bring those before the board, but like the chairman said today, once those are on the agenda, you will have to uh, appear and defend those, so just wondering, Ryan, do you have our policy on those, if you have any questions, feel free to email me or give me.
Okay, sure, that that's good enough, thank you.
You're welcome, all right, have a good day.
All right, good day, bye-bye.
When do we have, we have for Monday? Cause tomorrow's decision day, and then what is next week looking like?
So Monday, um, we should be meeting every day next week except for Thursday. I don't remember how many we have Monday, I don't think it's a whole lot. And have we want to adjourn?
Have we, have we, got those mail, or email out to Jeff Ryan, is it next week?
Uh, next week's at nine, no, I will get that sometime in the next few days before they get Monday, yes, but you should have. Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right, uh.
And I, we'll, I pause a week, we show that there's two coming on Monday.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
We only have two properties on Monday?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hey, Monday we adjourn?
Second, hold the favor. You are adjourned.